Good afternoon, everybody. If I could have you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under our government, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And yeah, I'm at a chance. I think we've had a little bit of time here, but go ahead and greet your fellow Rotarians. Yes, hello there. Um, I'm gonna go around, uh, yes, the visiting Rotarians, welcome.
Amy, right here. Amy Resnick is a visiting, Amy Resnick is a visiting Rotaria.
You turn it on. You gotta turn it on.
Turn on as I hand it to you.
Okay.
So start over.
Yeah.
Amy Resnick is from E Club One Centennial Colorado. She is a visiting Rotarian.
Welcome, Amy.
Welcome.
Welcome.
And also at Amy's table, we've got a visiting Rotarian from the Greater Bend chapter, Court Vaughn. He's our presenter today. So if everybody can help me, uh, welcome Court. Uh, and that looks like that's it. So great. Um, so I just want to say good afternoon to start out here uh, for our members and guests, our visiting Rotarians, and really, and Amy gets the longest distance yesterday, so. And uh, my name is Dr. Ockzen.
Penny.
And she, she was, um, our special thanks to our breeder, uh, Diane, thank you for signing up. And uh, I know the people that are gonna skip around to the cleanup team, and Tanya again for organizing the lunch. John for our IP support. If anybody didn't notice, we've got our second speaker in the back. And I don't mean speaker as in presenting or being electronic still here, so it should be easier for people if you got the whole house. Um, so thanks to John for getting that all organized, installed, and uh, also doing the sound check on the report. Everybody gets it. Uh, we're excited today to have Court Vaughn, our District Polio Plus Chair. Uh, he's from Rotary Club of Greater Bend as our presenter today. Um, and this is, for people who didn't know or haven't seen it in the newsletter, uh, this is also kind of our presentation, the World Polio Day, which is coming up next Friday on October twenty-fourth. Uh, Court is a polio survivor. He and his wife, Tony, has recently moved here on the Deep Bay of January. They have two sons and two grandsons. Court joined the Rotary Club of Greater Bend to help eradicate polio. He founded the Pints for Polio fundraiser in two thousand and twelve to raise money for global polio eradication and to increase local awareness regarding the need to vaccinate all children according to CDC guidelines. Pints for Polio has raised over three hundred thousand dollars for polio, for the Polio Plus Fund, including matching funds from the Gates Foundation. Actually, the Gates might even be two to one, so uh, at least now, I'm going to start it, but up to, I can't even remember, fifty million or something, some very large amount with the Gates Foundation, which is your double matches. Uh, Court is a past District fifty-one-ten Polio Plus Chair and passes Zone twenty-seven and Polio Now Coordinator. That covers ten districts and nearly eight hundred Rotary Clubs. Zone twenty-seven includes most of Oregon, Washington, Idaho, Nevada, and Northern California, and British Columbia. Court contracted, uh, contracted, I shouldn't say, excuse me, contracted polio in nineteen fifty-four during the global pandemic that crippled over thirty-five thousand people each year in the United States, mostly children under the age of five. Polio paralyzed Court's right leg. Court and Tanya, his wife Tanya, spent three weeks in India in January two thousand and twenty to, you know, on a trip to vaccinate children against polio. They also met with WHO and UNICEF, visited a polio rehabilitation clinic, and toured several, several Rotary projects. So join us in hearing Court's inspiring story of growing up in polio, learning about polio eradication, and the Polio Plus Foundation. So please, uh, please, uh, help me welcome Court. Well, thank you. How are we doing there?
We're doing great.
Okay. So I, um, I am a, the past Polio Plus Chair for District fifty-one-ten. Your current Chair is Jane Falls, and she's, she's in Eugene. Um, and I served for three years, and then that's, and after that, I moved on to be the, the Zone Chair. And so I'm, today I'm gonna tell you my, a little bit about my survival story, polio survival story, and also update you on what Rotary is doing to eradicate polio. For those of you who've been in Rotary a while, you probably know that Rotary had, had their number one project, which they've been working on since nineteen eighty-five, is to wipe out polio completely. So it would be only the second human disease in history to be completely eradicated, uh, to the point where, well, we, the first one was smallpox. Nobody gets a smallpox vaccination anymore. And hopefully someday that'll be true of, of polio. So first, let's talk about what polio is. Polio is caused by a virus, and it's, uh, spread by the oral fecal route. So what that means is that people get polio by drinking contaminated water or eating contaminated food, and then that they then pa-pass it back out. And if you're in an area like, like the, most of the United States, you, we've got good sanitation, clean water, no worries. But in areas with a poor sanitation and, and unsafe water, that's how it gets spread. And so when it, for most people who get infected with polio, about one hundred and ninety-nine out of two hundred people, they just have mild blue light symptoms and, and it goes away. But for one out of two hundred, uh, you, they, you get paralyzed because it attacks the central nervous system. Most people, that would be a, a paralyzed arm or leg, or maybe multiple limbs. And then in really rare cases, it attacks the part of the central nervous system that controls breathing. And as, as a result of that, you're no longer able to breathe on your own. Back in the nineteen forties and fifties, there was a global polio pandemic affecting the entire world. And we had a problem with a lack of, of ability to help people breathe on their own. There were entire hospital wards full of what the first, what is called an iron lung. That's what we had back then. These days, we have respirators. Back then, it, it was an iron lung. And, and so it was, it was really tragic to just have all these people who are stuck inside a, it's, it's basically a vacuum. They, instead of what the way respirators work today, where they force air into your lungs, they, the iron lung actually is a vacuum that, that, that it, when it forms a vacuum, it makes your, your lungs expand, and, and so you get breathing air. And then it takes that away, and you breathe out air, and then another vacuum. So it, it's noisy. And as a matter of fact, we just, last year, we had somebody pass away who spent their entire life getting an iron lung, seventy years. And it was their lung, so, wow. So, um, so at that time, when polio was a global pandemic, um, everything was closed, just like we experienced a few years ago with COVID. We, we knew that it was caused by a virus. We didn't know exactly how it was spread. So schools were closed, uh, we, we had swimming pools closed, movie theaters, restaurants. Everything was closed, and you know, you remember how disruptive that was back with COVID? You know, how challenging it was to, to figure out, you know, where your kids could go and how you could keep them busy? So it was in that kind of environment where I was born in nineteen fifty-two. Uh, that year, there was fifty thousand cases of polio. Um, in nineteen fifty-four, when I was a two-year-old toddler, you know, my parents had, had told me at that time, every summer, which is kind of when polio spreads, summer and, and fall, they would just be panicked. You know, what, what can they do? What is it safe to let their child do? Can, can they let me go next door and play with my friends? Can we go, can I go outside and play in the park? You know, what are they gonna do to protect me from polio? And, and then one day, um, they noticed that I couldn't stand up. And they rushed over and felt my forehead. I have fever. So they took me off to the hospital and waited, and the doctor came out and said, "I'm sorry to report that your son has polio. Um, we're not sure he's gonna survive. And if he does, he'll probably be full of paralyzed for life." And so that's what they were facing. Fortunately, I didn't die, but I, I did spend three weeks in isolation ward of the hospital, just being treated for the infection, just trying to get, you know, get me over that. And then three more months in the hospital recovering from the, the polio itself. There's no cure for polio. So the nerves were damaged by polio, and I had, I had a permanent paralysis. They were just hoping to minimize how bad it was going to be. So I went through daily physical therapy. Um, and you know, if any of you have been through physical therapy, you know, sometimes it's, it's, it's nice, like a massage. And then sometimes it's torture, where they're, they're yanking on you in ways that don't feel good. Um, finally, when I got, uh, released from the hospital after, uh, learning how to walk all over again, yeah, I got to wear one of these until I was sixty years old. I was recruited by the March of Dimes, which was raising money to develop a, a polio vaccine, because there was no vaccine at, at the time. And the way they did, one of the ways that they raised money is they would roll butcher paper out down, um, Main Street. And people who were downtown shopping, you know, back then, Main Street was where everything was. You went there for grocery shopping, the pharmacy, the bank, and, and so people would pass their spare change onto the butcher paper, and you know, my job as the poster child was to guard the money. So six months after I got polio, the first polio vaccine came out. It was developed by Salk, Jonas Salk, and it was an injectable vaccine. And within a few years, we managed to eradicate po-most of polio up in the United States. Um, however, we, we really had struggled internationally because it was so expensive with, with that injection. So then the Sabin vaccine came out in nineteen sixty-two, and all, and that was an oral vaccine. Now, all it took was two drops of that. Who here remembers lining up for a sugar cube? Alrighty, that's how you got your, the polio vac-vaccine back in those days. These days, we don't bother with the, the sugar cube. Kids just get the two drops directly into their mouth. So as a result of using the oral polio vaccine around the world, um, Rotary has, has managed since nineteen eighty-eight to reduce the number of cases from three hundred and fifty thousand cases a year in a hundred and twenty-five countries, down to this year so far, there's thirty-six. Last year, there were ninety-nine. And that's all because Rotary made a pledge in nineteen eighty-five to eradicate polio completely, a pledge to the children of the world to keep them safe from this dreaded disease that paralyzed me and, and many others. So in addition to reducing the areas and the total number of, of polio cases, uh, we've also gotten rid of three of, or two of the three types of polio. So we're, you know, we, we narrow it down to a small area. We, we get rid of the types of polio, and, and you can see here that uh, that does work. Oh, I guess that doesn't work. It doesn't show on your TVs. Well, what you can see right here, or if you're looking on other screens, is there are, there's just a few areas where polio still exists, and this is the most important right here, because that's on the border of Afghanistan and Pakistan. And so there's people crossing back and forth across the border. It's very remote. It's not really connected in any significant way to the federal government. It's more controlled by tribal leaders and factions and warlords. So it, it's a difficult area to go to, a dangerous area to go to, and that's why we, we're, we still haven't gotten rid of it completely. We, thanks to the way that Rotary operates, where we have local individuals, just like this club, who, who understand the area, the culture of the area, and of course, the language, that, that we can, we're able to negotiate with those people through their, their local people they trust, and get in there and do the vaccination. Uh, and so, you know, we're getting close, but we've just got a few areas that are, we've had some, some challenges. So the, the progress, as I mentioned earlier, we've only got one pipe of polio left. And we, we've been able to do this. We started on our own in nineteen eighty-five. And over the next three years, we recruited some partners, and now we have some very significant partners. I, I'd like to point out a, a few of these that you see on the screen. First of all, the Gates Foundation, they match, uh, everything the Rotarians donate, two to one. We have a, a goal Rotary International of raising fifty million dollars a year. And then that gets matched by the Gates Foundation, two to one. So Rotary ends up with a hundred and fifty million dollars, which they then issue out in the form of grants to the areas where that money is needed in order to get out there and vaccinate children, especially in these really difficult to, to reach areas. In addition to that, we ask each, uh, each club to, to donate a total of, of fifteen hundred dollars. That's how we, that rolls up to be fifty million. So we, you know, whether it's individuals in the club who, who's, who wanna donate, or whether it's a club doing some kind of a fundraiser, we hope that each club can, can step up and do that. And we hope that each district will donate some of their DDF grant money to, specifically to, to Polio Plus. Uh, also, um, and then if, and our partners, the, the two organizations that actually do all the on-the-ground work, that is the ones that go out and find these children, uh, talk to the parents, get a, get, get approval to have them vaccinated. You know, that's the World Health Organization and UNICEF. So I, my wife and I had the opportunity to go on what's called a National Immunization Days, or NID is how it's, it's usually referred to. And that's where a country decides that it's going to vaccinate every child in the country under the age of five, all in a one-week period. And they, they do that in order to make sure they don't miss any children, and there's no spread of, of polio in the, if, if they just spread it out and do one county, and then another county, and another county, then polio can spread between counties while, while, before they get there. So they do it all at once, whole country. And that's, in India, that's one point three billion people. Lot, a lot of kids in that country. And so the first thing we did is we started, and we met with the, the leaders in, in India of the World Health Organization and UNICEF to, to hear what their plan is. And we were very impressed with the professionalism, the leadership, the dedication that, you know, that, that these, these people had in, in planning what they're gonna do over the next week to make sure that they get this done right. Then we went out into the field to do the actual work. And the first step, that didn't change, did it? There we go. Okay, first step is what they call a booth day, and that's where they try to get parents, grandparents, uh, family members to bring the kids to a central location, bring them to a hospital, or a clinic, or a doctor's office, someplace that has the vaccine available. It has to be kept, uh, refrigerated until just before it's used. So you've gotta have some kind of refrigeration, not the, the deep freeze that COVID required, but, but it has to be kept, kept cold. And so we managed to vaccinate about forty percent of the kids now on this one day through the, the booth days. And that included, you know, one of the central locations we went to was a, a slum. And, and in this area, there are families who are living in tents or cardboard boxes, or whatever they can cobble together. It's a, it's a village, and they, they had, uh, you know, to show their poverty, all their water came from this, this well right here, hand-cuffed well, that, that served the en-entire, uh, village. And that well, by the way, was, was another Rotary grant, so thank you for that. And then, uh, right behind it here, this is, this is, uh, the, the outhouse. And so Rotary, you know, put, put in sanitation, put in clean water. And then the third thing that Rotary does is to help with the vaccinations. And so that's the three things you need to do to wipe out polio and prevent its spread. So you see these kids here are all raising a finger. Uh, and the reason for that is, is when we, when we vaccinated a, a child, we paint their little right pink a purple. We, you, we, we used to have, have them dip their finger in a, in a, uh, like an inkwell, but now we use a purple, a purple Sharpie. And you know, that, that stays around for a, a week or two, and so you, you can tell for the, that, that period of time, just looking quickly at a child's finger, whether or not they've been, been vaccinated. So then we move on to what's the gold standard of polio vaccinations. I doubled. Okay, let's see. There we go. That's me giving a vaccine. And so the gold standard of, of the polio vaccination routines, the NID, is to go door to door. We already got forty percent on that first day with a centralized approach. This is how we really make sure we get to every last child, so there isn't somebody out there who's vulnerable and didn't get the opportunity to be vaccinated. And how that works is we, we walk right down every street, go to every door. The, the people that are doing this are local volunteers, so they speak the language and, and, and can relate to the people. You just ask, you know, how many children in the house, in the house? How many are under the age of five? And can we, can we see them? And you'll wish their finger to see if they've been vaccinated. And then you go through the, but the toughest process is if there's any resistance. You know, this isn't something you force on people. It's a matter of persuading them of that they, that their benefits of having their children vaccinated. And so after you get done with that, then you knock on the wall, you know, that you've been here. How many children were in the house? How many were vaccinated? How many were unvaccinated? I've forgotten the code since, since two thousand and twenty. And then the arrow is, okay, after we went to this house, we went that direction to the next house. And we do that because we do go to the same houses four days in a row. Because just in case somebody's not home, somebody's a little reluctant, maybe we can persuade them on the next day. And by the time we get done with that, we, we, we have completed a week of doing the best we can to get every child vaccinated. And at the end of that week in India, we found out that we had managed to vaccinate a hundred and seventy-five million children in the country of India in just five days. Wow. So moving on to another area where, where vaccination is really important, and we've struggled recently, and that's Gaza. Gaza has been, uh, you know, a, a war-torn, uh, area for the last two years. And it, before the war started, they had a ninety-seven percent vaccination rate against polio. But I, after two years of, of, of all the, the disruption, and the bombs, and the rubble, and all that, the, the children weren't getting vaccinated. The ones that, that had, that were born before that, they've been vaccinated, but maybe they didn't get all three of their, of their vaccinations yet. But it was a really mess there, and, and Rotary, through its partners, managed to negotiate three humanitarian breaks in the war in order to get in and, and vac-vaccinate the children. And so in this case, it wasn't going door to door. It was going tent to tent, because pretty much everything else had been destroyed. And we also had, for what the booth days or central days, they had places where people could go. And so here were our parents who've been hiding for fear of going outside in case there's, there's fighting going on. They've been hiding themselves and their children for months. But they took the risk during this three, three-day period of, of a ceasefire to, to get in a line and get their children vaccinated. That's how important that, protecting their children from polio was to the people in Gaza. So, so I've talked to you a little bit about the fundraising that, that Rotary does. You know, it, it's really important, and one of the, one of the things that, that we do in, in, we started in this district is something called the Polio Plus Society. And what that is, is that if you pledge to donate a hundred dollars or more to the Polio Plus Fund, Rotary's Polio Plus Fund, a hundred dollars or more every year until polio is eradicated, then you, you qualify for the Polio Plus Fund. And, and it, we started that in, in this district about, uh, fifteen years ago, and it was so successful in this district that it spread to some nearby districts in, in Zone twenty-six and twenty-seven. And that was so successful that it's now an official program of Rotary International, the Polio Plus Society. So if you, if you feel like there was something like that, I encourage you to, to go to the district website and, and join. Because we, we'd love, love to ha-have, have you help us out. In addition to, to donating money to Polio Plus or having fundraisers, we also need your help in advocacy, talking, talking with people, trying, trying to get support for polio eradication. Uh, the federal government has, for about the last twenty years, uh, donated about two hundred and fifty million dollars a year to, to support, uh, global polio eradication. That's in addition to what Gates Foundation and Rotary doing. That's just our federal government. And most of that money went through USAID and the World Health Organization. Now, both of which have been, uh, defunded by, by this, this current administration. Uh, however, they, they aren't anti-polio vaccinations, so they did put that money back into the budget. Um, however, um, the entire budget is currently at risk, um, because of the government shutdown. So as, what, what we mean by advocacy is, can you, as individuals, email or call or, or visit your state and federal representatives and encourage them to keep funding polio eradication? Like, there, there is the support there, but everything's at risk right now, because we just don't know what's happening. Uh, another type of advocacy that, that Pol, that Rotary International does is, is with other countries. And right here, you see on, on the left, the, the leaders in Rotary who've been working on polio eradication went to Pakistan, met with the president, met with the, the top of the military, and, and they've got a commitment for not only Pakistan to spend money on polio eradication, but to provide safety, to provide protection for the health workers, because some of them have been attacked in, in recent years. And with, and with the federal government behind them, and especially the military, we're hoping that's what makes the difference, to keep them safe. We, they all, our Rotary leaders also went, went to Washington. And that's not just something you, that you can do as just a, a, you know, a, a midweek in Rotary. If you were ever, ever in Washington DC, and you're, you know, doing various things, make sure you meet with your representative and your senator, and, and, and tell them what's important to you. So what can you do? You can advocate as I've described. You can, you can vaccinate your children, that, get your grandchildren vaccinated, talk to your friends and neighbors, and you know, don't, don't try to beat it into them that their kids need vaccin-vaccinations. Talk to them. You know, ju-just have it, have a civil discussion. Listen to, to what their concerns are. If, if they don't wanna get their children vaccinated, listen to them and, and see where they're coming from, and try to direct them to some information that, that they, they might, uh, be willing to look at. And so if there's vaccine hesitancy out there, we need people like you on the ground just having civil conversations with, with, with your neighbors. Join the Polio Plus Society, donate, and, uh, actually, today in, in Eugene, you could also golf for polio. There, there's a indoor simulation, uh, place in, in Eugene where they're having a tournament today, where you can, you can, it's called Pars for Polio, and you can go out there and golf. Um, last week, I was in Bend, Oregon, and there was a Pints for Polio event going on. And that, that's sponsored by my home club, the Greater Bend Club. And we managed to get, it's a pub walk where you, you get a, a, you pay twenty-five dollars, you get a special end polio now pint cup and a map to all the participating pubs, and you just walk from pub to pub. They give you a six-ounce pour, so you get a taste of their beer, and you move on. And there, there were a dozen of those pubs. And there, there were a dozen of those pubs and I did not make it to all twelve. But I also felt all came the next day too. But as a result of, of the wonderful sponsors we have for this event and all of the participants, and it is a lot of fun. So. Next, next October, if you want to go over the mountains, we, we'd love to have you for Pints for Polio. We raised nine thousand dollars. Well, that's all I have to say. Yes.
Hi, we na- I'm, my name is Diane Nelson. I am. Um, a professor at Washington State University. I teach international management online. If you're not busy Monday night and we can talk after the meeting, I would like to have, oh, I, we just, sorry. Let me start or go faster, I'm sorry. Um, but my name is Diane Nelson. I teach international management online for Washington State University. We had our first live classroom last Monday. We have another one next Monday for the next five Mondays. If you are available any of those evenings, I would like you to come, not give this speech, but talk to the class. For maybe fifteen minutes. It's on Zoom. And we were talking about Gaza. I didn't know there was a polio issue in Gaza. We talked about all kinds of stuff. So anyway, if you're interested, this is very, very educational for me to listen to.
That sounds very interesting. Let's talk after the meeting.
Okay, great. And, um, I don't know if we're gonna have time for happy bucks, but I'd like to give. Twenty-five dollars to the Lincoln County Foundation. And there he is. I'll give, and I'll tell him, I want to give twenty-five dollars to Lincoln County Foundation. I have not felt very well for the last two months.
Okay, Nini, before I get out of here and let you con- conduct your business.
I, I've got a couple, no, if I'm on, on, is it on? Uh, I've got a couple of questions. Is that working? Do you have a world? Okay. So I wanted to ask first about if somebody had, was currently, when you said that you had polio and then the vaccine came out. Somebody was currently fighting the infection, that, does, uh, the vaccine work? Or do they have to basically let it run its course at that point?
Well, what, uh, the vaccine, depending on what kind of vaccine you have, it is, is either a, a dead virus. Or a, a virus that's been inactivated that is alive. And in both cases, it's the virus. So if you're already infected with, with polio, then you're, then getting a vaccine at that point's, uh, not gonna do, do you. And not any good for the, the course of the disease. The, the best thing you could do is, is do the typical things that you would do to fight any viral infection. To try to limit, limit the damage, because most, most people don't have any permanent damage from polio. Yeah, most, most people just, just fight off the virus on their own, get better, no variety. It's just that rare occasion where some, somebody gets infected and, and it repeats to. An attacker of the central nervous system.
That was one, kind of a point I was thinking about when you were saying that, again, one of the challenges with eradicating it. That since the majority of people don't show symptoms, or maybe symptoms that could be seen as something else. Um, but it's, it's tough to actually clip that last nail and get off and, um, and, and get rid of it and.
Yeah, as far as diagnosing polio, what there's, there's two things that go, that go on as far as, as polio eradication is concerned. You know, one is that we investigate every report of a child with what's called acute lacerated paralysis. Now that's some child that suddenly ha- doesn't have use of an arm or a leg or something like that. Then every one of those children, we, we send in a medical professional to, to, to find, to test out and see. Is it polio or is it one of several other things that, that can, and cause that same paralysis? So that's what we do as far as the individual is concerned. As far as the community is concerned, one of the main things that, that Rotary is funding. Is testing the sewage, so, so that they can see. They take, they, they fund having people go out and take samples of, of the, of the sewage to see if it's someone. If it's circulating in the community. They get the sample, take it back to a Rotary funded laboratory. It gets tested and you look for polio circulating in the wastewater. And not only do we, do we, does that get done in these remote countries where polio still exists. But we actually had a case of polio in, in New York, in Rockford County in two thousand and twenty-two. And we only had one person who got paralyzed. But we, we found polio in the, in the wastewater of that community for months afterwards. So it was still circulating. Nobody was getting paralyzed, but it was still circulating. So everybody was at risk. And so there was an effort to try to get the people who were unvaccinated in, in Rockford County, New York, to get vaccinated. Because they were at risk because polio was in their community.
And I have one other question when you, about the Polio Plus Society. Uh, they said you have to go to the district site. Um, so I just wanted to understand that. So I, I go do a monthly eighty to Polio Plus through the Rotary International site. Is that the same?
That, that's the same. So it's, any way that, that you, um, want to donate. Whether it's bringing a check to your, your club and giving it to, to, to your treasurer or for your Rotary Foundation person. Or you want to go online and make one donation, the, the best way is, the way you're doing it is, is to give a recurring monthly donation. Of, of whatever amount you feel comfortable with. As far as the Polio Plus Society itself, it's a four-way test kind of thing. We really don't have the resources or the ability to track whether a person is living up to their pledge. So we, we just ask you to go on to the district site. And there may be a way to do this on the international site now that it is an, an official program. And you basically sign yourself up, say that you're doing this and, and there's no tracking of it. We just ask, it, it's just a matter of following the four-way test and being committed. And then you'll, you'll oversee the, uh, materials that come along with being a member of the Polio Plus Society. You get a, a little pin like this that shows a child getting those two precious drops of the polio vaccine. You get a certificate that's suitable for framing, should, should you like those things. Um, and you, you get the satisfaction of knowing that, that you're, you're helping save the children in the world. Rotary has saved twenty million children so far from getting polio.
Please let me know in the district sent a letter out a little while back on it. So that's, that's like where I went through.
Oh, great.
Well, so you can just stay up for just a second. As a token of our appreciation for your presentation today, our club's going to vaccinate fifty kids in your name.
Oh, fantastic. Man, thank you.
And I just wanted to bring up a couple of other things, just kind of as a, you know, uh, in added way for Rotary International and our club too. Um, that, you know, there's a reason why Gates Foundation partners with us, about two to one. You know, Gates has the money. Uh, we've got the boots on the ground, we've got the connections, we've got that worldwide web. The fingers everywhere, the ways to get into these remote places, uh, that's what Rotary International brings, um, that Gates can't do. And that's why they partner with us. We, I mean, like I said, they've got the money, but they get a lot of bang for their buck by partnering with us. Because we're the, the drops in the mouth of your support, if you want to fix yourself. Um, every little bit counts and, uh, it's, we are getting really close. And that will be just a huge accomplishment, but it is tough. Uh, it is tough to actually. Let's see. So I wanted to point out that I have the newsletters out on the table again, if you weren't here last week, or if you want a, a copy of that. Um, and also the flyers that we had out last week from Shell, um, for the Salvation Army holiday fundraising. Um, so if you're interested in that, please take a look at that, uh, as the pumpkin decorating sponsors, as well as the kettle cook off sponsorship bubbles.
Which I want to, um, thank you to Arnie can.
Because they're online, you want the microphone? I, I think it was, I don't know if it buzzed or not.
A quick thank you to Rick Day and Arnie Construction for his second year in a row as pumpkin director.
Um, and, uh, I don't know, Rick, I didn't ask you before and I meant to, if you wanted to do an announcement on the concert here or?
Uh, we ended up a little over ten point five. Mark will have the finals, uh, shortly. We got a couple of sponsors we gotta chase down. We finally got our final report from the PAC, but I think what ten point five, ten point eight, somewhere in there. I mean, as far as you've had it, yeah.
So if anybody wants a, and a little more detail, uh, uh, over ten thousand dollars raised.
I did raise, but thank you, sir. So, so Mark will have a final, he's, he does the magic, so he'll have a final.
Well, I, I mean, I, I, I get that you didn't necessarily raise it all, but you were certainly the driving force of my project and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Um, for everybody that didn't know, that we gave up the, you know, your due season today. Um, the dolphin drop, so this really great taking this on, the laboring horde within the, the. The inertia behind this project, that's what got our fund really, we done this year. And that's what's going to enable us to do things in the future. So really, thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. And I would ask everybody, if you have ideas for a band, I'm hoping some nice, you know, eighty, ninety-year-old casino band. You know, that everybody knows their name. We can catch them when they're in the area, because that's what we need. We need a name. And part of what hurt us on this event, everything else went beautifully, was the band was too diluted. They did a free concert the week before at Park across the street. They did a free concert the next day at the Bayfront. My fault. I mean, they're a good band. We had a good time, but they're just, they, they kind of diluted their value. So we're looking, maybe next time, to spend a little more for somebody that's a bigger draw and a filled with lights. I love show. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize Rick, all the work he did on. A one-man band on it and did a lot of length work. Yeah, so I'd like to donate a bunch, a hundred dollars towards Polio Plus in his name.
And, and all, all our sponsors do. Rick and I were getting brought up before, but we had a lot of sponsors from our club as well as the community. Uh, Rick, Rick was really good, but again, the driving force who got all those sponsors, contacted them and, and made it so that, uh. We were pretty much guaranteed a profit if we weren't at risk and, um, based on the cost based, uh, because of the sponsorships we got. Um, any other announcements? Are you doing happy bucks on the shelf?
So, uh, Ryan mentioned a couple of our things we have going on. So October thirtieth will be our pumpkin decorating night. We'll be, we will be needing, uh, volunteers to help prep the pumpkins and the, and the chapel and everything, get things ready for the families that'll be coming that night. Uh, so if you have time on Thursday, October thirtieth, let me know and we'll, uh, get that all ready to go. And then, uh, on November second, uh, it's a Sunday, but after our church time, so probably about, uh, one thirty-ish or so. We'll be decorating the chapel and getting ready for our kettle kickoff on November fourth. So if you want to get some early Christmas decorating in, where you won't get, you know, judgmentalized from your neighbors and help, uh, help out with that. Before this, the day of the event, so, um, we are looking for table captains and sponsors, which a table captain basically means you're gonna invite friends. Who will help us raise our goal for the season of the ten thousand dollars, uh, which goes to helping fund not only our overhead, but also feeding. The families in the community, um, our, sorry, really quick, got a statistical brain, right? Um, so in the last year, the number of families that come through our doors every week has doubled. And we expect it to go up in the next month, just because there are some changes coming to SNAP benefits. A lot of people. Um, according to DHS, about three thousand Oregonians will be losing their SNAP benefits in the coming months. So, uh, with all of that, that also, you know, uh, things have been affected at Oregon Food Bank and Food Share. So, uh, our supply has been less and they, thanks to partnerships with Fresh Reality. We are able to order food to supplement our food pantry, but that costs money. So all of these donations that come in during Christmas and all throughout the year, when you get those, you know, letters in the mail from the Salvation Army that say, please give. Here's what it does. It really does do that. Um, everything that you give goes right back into our community to help provide for our neighbors in need. Uh, and so one last appeal is then, uh, red kettle season starts in the middle of November. So if you're interested in volunteering as a bell ringer, we ask for about a two-hour shift and you can, you know, grab a friend or your spouse or whoever and. Dress up, have fun. Uh, I've got some great pictures of the Thompsons ringing the bells there on. And then Laura and her husband had fun with it last year. So if you're interested in bellring, let me know. I've got all the websites and all the hookups to, you just sign up for that. I think that's everything for now.
Uh, I know some of you guys saw the flyers I put on the table, but the dog are actually traveling across country to park national forest foundation. This is the National Forest Foundation manages all of the lands, although it's like national parks, outside national parks that we continue to enjoy them. Um, over the past like two and a half months, Penny and I have been traveling across the US to visit our national forest. I made sure that Rotary clubs are aware of the difference between our national forest and our national parks. Because even though, so if you try to go to a national park in the last week or two, they are all closed, but our national forests are made open. They are continuing public resources always there for our community and they receive separate funding. They are much more reliant on private donations than the National Park Service. And so for that reason, Penny and I have been going around and hiking and talking to our parents. And trying to convince people to give them two dollars if they have a bit to spare to the National Forest Foundation, that we can continue to enjoy our beautiful public lands. Um, so there's a flyer on this table if you're interested, but I just appreciate you guys letting us come here and give it to you all. Thank you.
Uh, this Saturday at the Bieber game, if you're funny, I'm not. Um, we are doing a tailgater that'll have all the youth exchange, um, kids district wide. We'll be hosting them at our family tailgater. So if you're interested, um, we're gonna have food, probably starting around five and, um, fellowship and. Get to meet all the exchange students. So let me know and I can send you our location.
Right, thank you. And so then I just, we just found something out technically. This one has to go off without it work. So, uh, so I'll leave it as quick as I can.
We have one more, Brian. We have an on, we have an online Dana who would like to donate one hundred dollars to Rick's Paul Harris for all of his hard work.
Uh, happy bucks. Happy bucks, uh, guy.
Yes, I am thirty-one dollars happy because the Lob City Midly Club has our fundraiser. We raised thirty-one hundred dollars and it's the Polio plus thing.
I, I forgot, uh, I'm surprised more happy bucks because I haven't talked to. Isabella Burrows, who is our F B N's chief of student. I chatted with her today, I'm messenger, and she's giving them help. Having a good time. She, they are four hours in front of us, so she went on to school and I remember that because I don't want to buy her a school. I want my dollars.
Thank you, Diane.
Any other happy bucks? Uh, so I just wanted to do one last appeal then, if you, if you, uh, consider doing, uh, reoccurring. Um, donation to Rotary International, Polio Plus, it's, it's, it's not hard to do. Uh, you sign up and just they, they charge you each month through your credit card or whatever you want to set up, fit that up. They send you a letter each and every month, uh, acknowledging your donation, if you have the tax purposes or anything like that. Uh, so, uh, just think about it, um, because, uh, then something you don't have to consider that goes for you, Paul Harris as well. Um, it's one of the, uh, the main foundation, uh, causes, so.
I was just add on to that, maybe it's something that we can cover in a future meeting, but, um, like we had all of our kids. As a gift in the holiday time, who gave to teachers. Um, I donated to Rotary in like education and literacy or peace or whatever I thought. And we gave that to teachers and it meant a lot to them. So it's another, you can gift it in someone's name.
But that, that's for that, uh, and you can do that in any of the, any of the foundations, sort of in Ukraine or anything like that. And if you have those family members like I do, that, um, they no longer. And if you have those family members like I do, that they no longer want things at Christmas or anything like that, that it is nice. They appreciate that. You know, you can go to other organizations, too. One Year for the Office, I, I got everyone members to Oregon Coast Council for the Arts. And you get their email on there so that they can hopefully come to prattle dance and all that. But yeah, rather than sometimes physical things, these things that make a big difference in our community. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Please, anybody have any question about their Paul Harris, how many more dollars or points they need to get for a Paul Harris? Any questions about that, Polio Plus, anything else, please come to me. And if it's already with Dana, I maxed out on Paul Harris, we could put that to the Polio Plus side. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Rick. And so I will, I, I know Julia's not here, so, Mark, are you doing the membership incentive?
Well, it's Trevor Bear this week, but.
Oh, it's the first, Trevor's missed in a long time. That'll show him. Oh, sorry, Michelle.
One more thing I forgot is we are collecting silent auction items for the kettle kickoff. So if you, your company or whatever would like to contribute to that, please let me know.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. And so John, do we have a social media or fifty fifty?
Yeah, go ahead and turn that off. Oh, this one works. All right, so the social media winner is Mark Miranda. And this week's fifty fifty is worth seventy eight dollars, fifty cents to the winner. And here we go. Spencer Nave.
Oh, he's the one who won the football. Okay, so our next regular lunch meeting is next week, October twenty-third, here at noon. Our presenter's going to be Jason Holland, to the director of the Oregon Coast Council for the Arts, giving us an update on the economic impacts of arts in our community, which and also with just some of the things that you consume there around the pack. Some of the cool stuff they've done recently with, again, driven by their, take a look at the crosswalk. You know, it has a big mural there, so it's no longer sort of open expanse with two lines. It's, it's really cool. And as well as the wrap on the windows on the north side of the pack, they were really cool, too. And there's also the mural project that wrapped up at the Visual Arts Center. So we'll enjoy that, speak, presentation from Jason. And Diane, if I could have you take us out with the four-way test?
The four-way test of the things we think, say, or do. First. Second.
All concerned.
Third. Fourth. And best.